Let us know when you're ready. All right. Call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, an interior republic for which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. You can be seated. Welcome in, everyone. Make sure to silence your cell phones. Good to see everybody. Just as a note, just for the board knows, at 5:30 I have to leave. I have a prior six o'clock appointment. So Vice Chairman Nelson will finish chairing the meeting at that time. So just FYI. Thank you, Mark, for taking over for that. All right. Item one on the agenda is approval of agenda. I will move that. Second. All right. Motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zero. Epnusix, the consent agenda. Items two through seven constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes of the October 28, 2025 meeting. Item three is approval of claims. Item four from Board Administration, Karen James, approval of resolution for a tax suspension for DT. Item five from Board Administration, Heather Saterite, it's approval of funds for the holiday luncheon on Tuesday, December 16, 2025. Item six from County Treasurer Tina Bertrand, it's approval of resolution naming depositories. Item seven, human from Human Resources, Melissa Thomas. Item A is the approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions. Item B is the authorization to initiate the hiring process. Item C is approval to deauthorize county position. And item D is the presentation of award certificate to Carla Poli. And with that, that's the end of the consent agenda, and I will move that. Second. All right. Motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson. Any discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zero. All right. On to that. Lead us to number eight from Secondary Roads, Laura Severs. Item A is the approval of resolution to vacate excess county right-of-way on 170th Lane.
Laura? Yeah, so this first resolution is to remove the excess right-of-way that we have on 170th. So the resolution states all road right-of-way as recorded in Book 697, page 258, in Section Three, Township 88, north range 47 west of the Fifth Principal Meriden, Woodbury County, Iowa, lying outside of 170th Lane, as shown on Sheet Three of the survey plat, recorded in document number 2025-06883, and included in Exhibit A. All of that was part of the backup, but we just have excess right-of-way that we're giving back to the adjacent landowners.
Okay. Any questions by the board?
I had move approval.
Second. All right. Motion by Nelson, second by Dietrich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zero. Item B is the approval of resolution for recognizing 170th Lane as a part of the secondary road system. Laura?
Yeah, so this is just cleaning up our maps. We're always looking for little things that are not clear or, you know, are not on a map. So this was actually built, I think they said, in 1948. And then this was then further on, done later on, but it doesn't have a name to the road that is curled around on 170th Street. So to help the landowners get packages and have property, you know, named correctly, we just thought the curved road that comes off of 170th Street and then meets back up with 170th Street, a good name for it would be 170th Lane. So that's what we're looking for, is approval of that to add that name to the secondary road system.
I would move approval.
For second. All right. Motion by Nelson, second by Dietrich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zero. Item C is approval of the contract for project number LB 7397, Bridge Replacement Project with Dixon Construction Company, for $974,948.95.
Correct. So this was the project that was approved last week, and the contractor signed it and would like to get started within a week or two. So be a great project to get done. And again, just looking for the approval of the contract.
Okay.
Move approval.
Second. All right. Motion by Nelson, second by Dietrich. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
All right. On to number nine, from myself, versus the approval to remove Supervisor Mark Nelson as the county representative on the LEA Board and appoint Supervisor David Dietrich as the new county representative on the LEA Board.
I'll move to remove Mark Nelson from the jail... ...dot, dot, dot, Board.
All right. I will second that. I'll second to approve the removal of Mark Nelson.
For the record, I was never in jail. Never been investigated for a crime. I actually had a neighbor stop me today and ask if I was in jail. No, I was not in jail. What a... Okay. Anyway.
All right. So continue.
People don't read beyond the headlines.
Right.
Even the cutoff ones on the mobile app.
Right. So this motion is just today, just some backups right now. This is just the board desires Mark to be physically present at the LEC mediation meeting in November to achieve this. Supervisor Nelson cannot serve on the LA law enforcement authority in order not to violate quorum rules as per Iowa code. And so Supervisor Dietrich is our only other supervisor that meets the requirements per Iowa code for the law enforcement authority. So anyhow, that's what today's motion is about. So I'll... Motion by Young, second by...
And I can... I'll talk about it a little bit too. So... Because I have had some questions about this since that article came out. So the Law Enforcement Center has three members on it. I'm the only one that serves as a countywide elected capacity. Because it is a three-member board, you have Iowa open meeting laws, which basically the only time three of us can be together is when there's a published, a public notice in a, in a public meeting. Obviously mediation cannot be a, a public thing, although we would have to... This board and the Law Enforcement Center board would have to approve any, any damages that we, you know, would agree to. The fact remains that I cannot attend that while I'm a member of the Law Enforcement Center Authority with Ron Wick, who is, has been selected to represent them. So this is... Dave Dietrich is going to swap places with me, and in that way, Daniel Bittenger and I can go. I've been, I was put on the LEC Authority about a week after the, the delays were first announced. And so of the five of us supervisors, I probably have the most firsthand knowledge of, of the dealings that went on out there. And so I think for the, for the taxpayer, just my knowledge and just the fact that I am a true representative, and just like the five of us are, I think it's, it's important that we be there. And so that's, that's all that this move is and allows us to do.
Right. Yep. All right. So motion by Young, second by Bittenger. All right. Any further discussion?
And to clarify, my motion was also to appoint you, Mr. Dietrich, to the jail.
I thought you were scared.
Board.
All right. Here to do my part.
Did you say appointed or sentenced?
Going to jail.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zero.
It's probably more important that we, or appropriate that we say appointed, because if we would have voted sentenced, the article would have been Dave Dietrich sentenced to jail, and that would have not been good either.
No.
Trying to help you out, Dave.
Thanks.
All right. Item B, last up here on the agenda, is the 2026 Employee Healthcare Plan Discussion. So today's, this is informational item only, no decisions. We're just talking through options. And so let me just clarify, just so for the, just for the audience and for the board. Mark and I this week have had different conversations and people calling us, reaching out. And so just want to clarify a few things. As always, the board always wants to hear from our employees. And so it's, it's been said, as long as the board doesn't want to hear from us, but I think that's categorically untrue. Our emails, our personal phone numbers, our posts, so please call us, text us. We'll meet with you. We'll have lunch, coffee, we'll take your emails. So I just want to make sure it's just publicly stated to all of our employees. We want to hear from you. So please reach out to the board. The board does care about you. Second of all, it's, I've been asked, does the board get personal kickbacks or bonuses by increasing the healthcare plan? The answer is no. Now, that sounds ludicrous, and some of you are smiling in this audience, but that's been asked of me and Mark. And so that answer is categorically no. We are not New York or Chicago. So no with that. By raising anything or changing the healthcare plan, we don't get a percentage back or raise anything like that. I know it sounds crazy. We've also been asked and been told that since we're, we want to change the healthcare plan, it's because the board gets all of our benefits for free. That is categorically false, just on the record. The board pays the same premiums you pay, same taxes, IPRs, everything, everything you guys get, we get the benefits as well, but we pay for them as well. So I know that, I think for most of you probably in the room understand that that's crazy, but we have been told that, asked that about that. I just want to make sure the record's straight, that the board pays all the same premiums, everything that everybody else does. So, so yeah, so that's there. Tonight is just going to be information, so just, we're going to hear from Ryan, then hear from Seth with Gallagher, about some updates we have. And so we're going to go with Ryan and then Seth with the updates. And then from there, we'll take some discussion in the board tonight. This is just discussion information to be able to direct Ryan, Melissa, and Seth with what the board wishes are and so.
Would it be all right before we dive into that, if I talked about the timeline a little bit? Because we've got a lot of questions about that as well.
That's fine, yeah. And Seth will address some of that here too later. Yeah, but go ahead. Yeah, go ahead. That's fine.
So, and I realize that quite a few don't watch every single meeting, so there's definitely things that can be missed. But last year, during the budget process, we had enormous shortfall in the health fund. It was, had been a persistent issue that I think every year I've been on the board, we've had to move money out of reserves to keep that count fully funded. And so throughout the budget process, we talked about raising premiums, raising employee contributions, and then we talked about the deductibles and out-of-pocket max. And it was made clear that we can't change any of that until the open enrollment, which is this time period through December. And there are various meetings where we asked for, asked Melissa, we talked about, you know, if, if the premium increases don't offset some of these, then the next step would be to mess with deductibles, out-of-pocket max. There was one meeting where I asked Melissa a question about, you know, if we were to raise deductibles or double them, what would that bring? And at that point, I don't think she had crunched through the numbers. And so we had, we had talked about this, and what we had decided was that July 1, we'd made that account whole. We wanted to see how the first couple months of the new fiscal year did, which we started fiscal year of, this fiscal year in July 1. So we watched July, we watched August, we got into September, and the first two months were not very good. Melissa Thomas contacted us and said, hey, you know, we're not trending the right direction yet again. If we're, if we're going to do something about the health plans, this is above my pay grade. Gallagher is a great company that, that this is what they do. This is their wheelhouse. Should I reach out and set up a meeting? We both said yes. Dan and I and Melissa ended up meeting with Seth, I think it was September 15. Had a pitch on what their services were. I think it was the next week that we brought that to the board, and we talked about in an open meeting what Gallagher could do for us. We approved that. And then it was, the ball was kind of in their slash Wellmark's hand, is as we found out last week, that Wellmark had a delay. So last week was the first time that we could have brought this forward. Obviously, the open enrollment only goes till December 10. So there is a very short timeframe that we're working with. But I just wanted to lay that out, because I know some people said, well, it seems rushed to get this in this year. Well, in a way it is, because we only, we had to evaluate how we were doing in the new fiscal year, which we were not doing well. And so the only time we had was to get something done by December. Otherwise, we cannot do anything until this time next year. And if we're trending even worse than we were the year before, going a whole nother year is just irresponsible. And so we apologize that it is this close, but this is literally the soonest that we could have addressed this. Otherwise, we would have just totally been spitballing if we would have done this back in July or August to try to anticipate where we might be. So I hope that that answers some of the timeline questions. A lot of people called and asked about that. More than happy to, to share that. I think if Wellmark would have had the turnaround in the week, like Gallagher had said, we could have had this item two weeks ago, and that would have given us a little better time to discuss it. But that's, you know, we got it to them as soon as we could. Gallagher got this to, to them as soon as it could, and that's just the way that it came back to us. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you. Chairman?
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair. All right, Ryan, on the screen here, it should be up on the screen. Ryan, will you go through, we got some, some of our calls for the last couple fiscal years. So if you could just kind of give us your...
Well, what I was attempting to do with this is just show what the impact to the healthcare fund was with just only looking at the employee, I mean, the hospitalization, which is the healthcare. The, there was other items in that fund, which includes dental and vision. Those items I did not include in this analysis. So really, all I was looking at is what is the contributions, is what the county contributes on each employee into the fund. The employee column is what is withheld from the employees for their premium. So it has, you know, I also have a list of questions here from Tina, and one of her that this does not include any co-pays or co-insurance or, you know, this is just the employees' premium, because I'm just looking at the healthcare fund. So the total contribution for, in fiscal year '25 was 6.5 million by the county and $578,000 from the employees' premiums. So the total money that came in was 7.1 million. In looking at the Wellmark monthly statement, and again, I did not have access to break it out by doctor visits, hospitalizations, so I just had the total summary. The total claims paid out was 8.7. We get a stop-loss reimbursement if a claim goes over $100,000 for a case. And then direct pay, I believe, is, you know, like a retired individuals that have to pay both sides. And then the pharmacy rebate also came in about $1 million. The fixed costs, which, and they have increased dramatically, and they are going up 20% again on the 1st of January. On the August statement, the fixed cost is $4,500 as an access fee. Admin and pharmacy is $20,500. And the stop-loss premium is $93,000 a month. So that's a total of $118,000. And you can see, just a year ago, it was $93,000. And that is going up to $140,000 per month. But this is just summarize that on an average month, the healthcare fund went down by $100,000 a month. On the next two sheets, I just attempted to do a, we cannot truly know what the claims are going to be. So I did two different methods to try to just give an estimate of what is going to happen. The first one is we have had July, August, and September statements. So I took the actual numbers from those statements, and then I averaged them out for the rest of the year. Just to say if we repeat an average month of what we've had so far. For the contributions, we increased last week, the county, by 6.5%. So that will show that based off of our current trends, we will fund about $6.9 million into the healthcare fund. And if we go with an monthly average estimate, we will be underfunded by $250,000, which I am going to say is going to be not, we are not going to receive $100,000 in stop-loss reimbursement in January or February. So $250,000 is an extremely low estimate, and I do not believe it'll be at best probably a half million dollars underfunded. The other method I used is instead of doing an average, I dropped in the prior year actual numbers. Just, and that came up to be a potential shortfall of $1 million. If we, Wellmark themselves, in total of claims and fixed costs, last year was about $10 million. They say it could be, their estimate is 10.5 million. So if we go with what I'd say worst, worst-case scenario, we could be $1.5 million underfunded. And, you know, really, my main point here is we are not properly budgeting the correct cost for every employee for the county. We increased it by 6.5%. The county contribution, if we want to properly show that if no other changes are made, we need to adjust that by another 20% to...
On the county side.
On the county side, yes. And if we reflect, if, on the worst-case scenario of 10.5 million, if we, I don't know if this is truly the policy, that 90% of the funding is county and 10% comes out of employee premiums, the employee premium should increase by probably at least 10% if no other changes are made. And that has nothing to do with, again, the deductibles are any, you know, how, it's just based off of how the current plan is set up. And that would reflect another $1.2 million out of the county's budget.
Okay.
And that would be... And that would be in addition to the near 450 that we added last week.
Yes. That's in addition, that 6.5%, you can see in the December to January, went up from 495 to 5... So that went up to reflect that 6.5% increase.
So for this fiscal year, the county might have, if we don't do anything, might have to add almost one, worst-case scenario, almost 1.6 million to the health fund, which we've already done 450-ish.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And if nothing is done, if we don't make any changes, this money comes out of general supplemental. That's where I say every office and department's budget needs to correctly reflect the cost of health benefits for the employees. And if we don't, right now, the current beginning balance for general supplemental is 1.4 million. And we've already budgeted a, if, deficit of $490,000. So if nothing is done, the general supplemental fund could be completely wiped out.
All right. Anything else, Ryan?
Yeah, that's all I have for now.
All right. All right. Thank you, Ryan, for that. Seth, come on up.
Sure.
And then we'll...
Is there any questions I can answer right away on anything? Otherwise, I can go through the three things Melissa asked me to address.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. So...
Motion to receive. Second. Motion by Nelson, second by Bittenger. To receive, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zero.
So that first piece, not that it has anything to do, but it, it's a timeline from Wellmark, because I requested the timeline from Wellmark on exactly why it took three weeks to get that information. So that gives you a full timeline on exactly what you had, you know, alluded to, Dan. One. Two, they are going to give a $5,000 credit on your administration costs in the month of November, just because of their lack and the three-week process. So I wanted to first bring that up to just give you guys a timeline on the fact that it kind of was out of our hands, unfortunately. So that is what it is. Second, the question I want to address was the HSA or the Health Savings Account. I think it'd be a great idea, just from a recruiting and retention perspective. I think that's something to definitely look at. However, with your high deductible health plan, if you look on the far right there for 2026, on the top right, where it says $1,700, that is the minimum deductible that you can have for a high deductible health plan. And currently, your out-of-pocket max is $750. So you'd actually have to increase that by $950 in order to qualify for an HSA. I do think it's something to look at. However, I'm going to guess that nobody would probably go from a $750 deductible over to a $1,700 deductible, just by way of how people buy healthcare. And lastly, what we have talked about over this past week with Melissa specifically was, how about we look at something in between what was currently happening and what was proposed last week? And so that's what we went to Wellmark with. We should have something, I can tell you that it's on top of their desk after this last week. So I'm going to guess that we'll have that probably Friday, and we'll be able to spreadsheet and peer review and make sure that everything's complete by Monday. I know that next Tuesday, we don't have a meeting. That's something just from a timeline to keep in perspective. So those are coming, and basically what it looks like, it's half of what we suggested. So we'll have current, basically at midpoint, and then the presentation from last week. In addition to that, we are looking at both a two-tier. Currently, you guys have a single and a family plan, and we'll be looking at a single employee, spouse, employee, child or children, and family. So there'd be actually a four-tier structure, which probably the majority of our businesses are on at this point. I did ask Wellmark for just a consensus on where they're at with that, and they said less than 10%. I believe actually still have a two-tier system, just because people are buying insurance differently with, with Obamacare that, you know, transpired in 2010. So just to kind of give everybody an update on where we're at in the timeline. Any questions for me?
And I've had employees call and ask, you know, about, you know, say, a single plus spouse, for example. And absolutely, I think it'd be great to have more offering, and for, for some folks, it would help them more than if they're on a family plan, if it's them and their spouse or whatever. So I think that'd be great.
So when you, when you look at that, the biggest thing that we're up against in healthcare, and it's not just Woodbury County, it's everybody. And we're all up against this 10% increase every single year, and that's compounded for the last 10 years. So we're at 100%, like I said last year, of where we were at even 10 years ago. And it's expensive. But when you're looking at how people buy health insurance today due to that expense, people are pushing people off plans, and it's unfortunate. But that's just, the businesses are going, hey, I can only afford so much here. I can only do so much. And there's businesses out there where they have to do this, otherwise they get fined. Part of the Obamacare piece says, hey, if you have more than 50 employees, you're going to get fined. I believe it's close to $4,000 per employee per year if you don't do anything. So some people are just checking boxes and going, hey, here's your $9,000. I'm not saying that they're best employers, but they're doing what they need to do. They're saying, hey, here's a $9,000 deductible, and we're going to charge you 120 bucks a month for it. That's, that's real, that happens. I'm not saying that that's where we need to go, because recruiting and retention is obviously number one right now. And so we do have a middle ground with the four tiers that we're looking at.
Were there any calculations on where that midpoint put us with the fund, then?
I'm going to guess, just based on actuarially, when we looked at last week's numbers, that was, I believe, $1,075,000, to be exact. And if we cut that in half, just from an actuarial perspective, I would say it's going to be 537,000 or thereabouts. We did also look at changing some deductibles, I'm not deductibles, but also some co-pays, and adjusted those by what was in line with the benchmarking as well. And again, we'll propose that, and if you guys would like to, you know, obviously, as soon as we get the numbers, we'll look at. And we can adjust those co-pays and things like that again, too, if we need to. But it is a midpoint from a deductible and out-of-pocket perspective. I'm going to guess it's going to be about a half a million from that perspective. There's also that third plan. So if anybody does want to stay on a HMO, which I know is something that was discussed too, that would be another option. That will be a lower-cost option versus a PPO, but we'll have the same three options. They'll just be lower from a deductible and out-of-pocket perspective.
What can you tell us as far as the percentage that the employer pays of the premium? Looks like we're at between 91.9 and 89. Forecasted, is that correct, Ryan?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So I guess this is for, you know, all the employees and dependents. But just in that paradigm, what is, what is the breakdown that our region has nationally?
Sure. I don't have the benchmark in front of me, but last week, I believe, public entity specifically, which is, I would say skewed to, very favorably to the employees, because our, I mean, if you look at our, our schools and our teachers and things like that, they pay 100% of the single and nothing of everything else. That's just how it works. And they did that through just a long period of time. But, so that skews the number a little bit for public entity. But, so that skews the number a little bit for public entity, but the answer is, is you're right in line with the single. With the family, if you looked at your papers from last week, I believe you are about twenty, twenty or so percent below what other public entities charge, roughly.
We have that, you want that on the screen?
Pardon?
Do you want that on the screen? I think you have that in the back.
I, I, do you have it?
No, yeah, Karen, Karen, can you pull up the backup for the health, this healthcare agenda item? We have it, Seth, we'll be able to put it on the big screen right here. Thank you, Karen. It's page, page forty-one of the backup. Uh, oh, sorry.
Uh, keep going.
Keep going, keep going. I must have a different...
Keep going. Right there.
Forty-seven.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah. There we go. Is that what you're talking about, Seth?
Yep, so if you didn't go down a little bit there.
So, yeah, I'm going to remember you have the visual, be able to see everything, yeah.
Yeah, sure. So the HMO, again, right in line, you're at fifty-seven bucks. Again, that's for the deputies and those folks, and then you've got the seventy-five on the HMO for the other plan, and if you go to the PPO, which is the majority, I believe about ninety percent of your employees sit on the PPO. If you want to go to that next page, sorry to boss you around here. Yep, right there. Okay, there you go. So ten percent is, is where you guys are at currently, and twenty-five percent is Iowa. But eleven percent, if you see on the public entity piece, and again, that's a skewed number, because we have zero and we have two hundred. So again, we're doing an average, and again, you've got quite a few people that are, this is the largest benchmarking report in the country, so there is some credibility to this. Like I said last week, the family cost share, you're at eight percent, most folks are at twenty-two percent. The problem with percentages are, and I'll say this all day, is the, the thing we're up against here a little bit is, if you look at your individual rate at nine thirty-five, projected for next year, that ten percent and eight percent are on larger numbers than what other public entities are at today. So not only is it skewed from the perspective of it's eight percent, but it's eight percent of a larger number.
Can I ask you a real quick question?
Please.
I know it's come up a few times in discussions among employees this week. This public entity benchmark that you're talking about, is that limited to public entities in Iowa, or is that all across the country?
No, we could get an Iowa-specific, but this is across the country. I could definitely get that. Here's what I'll find, is if you'll look at even across the categories, sorry about that, they're really close, especially when you look at public entity, but if you would like to see that, I can definitely get that. I'd have to get a ad hoc report, basically, to be able to do that, but that's something we could absolutely get.
I think that there's a lot of people that would feel that would be helpful.
Okay.
So then the Iowa column is all Iowa employers?
So that's going to be manufacturing to farming to public entity, that's everybody included.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And just so everyone knows, Sioux City went out for RFP on an insurance agency to help them, and Gallagher was picked. And that's what, just so everyone, I know some of you have been bringing up Sioux City, you know, what are they using? We went out again and looked, and Gallagher was the, was the choice, and above all, so, so it's...
And there's some things we're going to be able to do next year, too. This is, this is a pretty big hit for everybody. This has not been a fun week for, for me, just because I, I feel for everybody in the situation. I actually do care. But there's going to be some things that we'll be able to do behind the scenes within the program, just because it's been sitting idle for about fifteen years. And so you have a grandfathered plan. Just to kind of give you a, a number on that, with the team that I work with, with Walmart, that does everything with your account, they have seventy counts, and they have one other grandfathered plan. You're the only other one, so the other sixty-eight are non-grandfathered, just due to the fact that we've increased deductibles and coinsurance, you know, slowly over the last fifteen years. So unfortunately, we're at a point where it's, hey, we know what we need to do in order to get the funding correct, but what's the middle ground, so we make sure that we keep the self-funded plan, which I know this is number one goal, in place, because I was the one that regulates that. And then two, obviously, you want to, want to make sure that you keep the employees happy, and healthy for that matter. But if you go to a fully insured scenario, which it has happened around here, you're going to pay seven to eight percent more than you're paying today, and not have the control that you guys do today. So that's, that's, that's very important.
Right, right. Right, and after talking with you, Seth, and then talking with Mark and Melissa, right, I think a stair-step plan is probably a, a better approach
Okay.
to begin. But you're right, but what, but what amounts, right?
Sure.
Right. Okay, yeah, any other board questions, or? Once again, if everybody, this is information, right, no decisions being made, right, we're gathering information, getting stuff. So thank you, Seth, for working. I know you worked over the weekend to get the board some information, so. So, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, board, if there's any, you know, public comment, you're welcome to come to the mic, but just once again, let's keep it germane, we're not going to, you know, go into the weeds, but if there's anything, you have questions or concerns or ideas, but just remember, there's nothing being decided tonight, all right? With that, bud.
Tony Wingard from the Sheriff's Office.
I was looking around here, and I think unfortunately, besides Kevin, I'm the longest tenured administrator i- in the room. So that means that I've talked to the board a lot over a lot of years. Prior to that, I was our union president, so I dealt with the board a lot with negotiations. And there's been numerous times, and it's the fact of the world, is employees, I don't care which group comes forward, they need a raise, want a raise, asking for a raise, and, and the money's not there. And so they'll, they'll give you their comparables, and they'll say that, look, we're, we're ten percent down from being in the middle, and we always get told that we can't do it all in one bite. We, we gotta, we gotta, you gotta give us time to, to make you whole. And so we're going to give you a small bite, and the next year, we'll give you a small bite, we'll try, we'll try to get you there. Back the Blue was a bill that passed a few years ago that really did well for the Sheriff's Office. I'm not going to lie, for the sheriff and hi- his appointed deputies. But it was a law that was passed. And the board at the time said we have, we can't do it all at once, and we chose not to fight it. We, we, we chose to, you do what you have to do, and the board ha- the board has done it. I understand that we have great insurance, and I understand insurance has gone up. But a three hundred percent raise on some of the things that you're asking, that might happen, when most of the employee contracts got three percent raises, I think it's rather steep. I'm glad to hear that we're looking at trying to find something halfway, meet, meet in the middle. I, I think that's huge. But this whole thing, to me, feels rushed. It feels like, and maybe, I'm two months away from leaving, so I haven't been paying much attention, but I don't know if the employees knew that this was coming. And may, maybe they did, but this seems like it was out of, out of left field. To me, we talk about being transparent, we talk about praising the employees, why weren't the employees, the, the unions involved in this, in these discussions, knowing, hey, this is coming down the road, this is what we're going to look at July, August, September, to see how we're doing? Instead, it's a meeting that's put on the agenda, saying, we, we got to do something about this, we got to do it by December tenth. It seems rushed. I understand you guys are between a rock and a hard place. I understand the money, the money, it is the money, but you've always asked us, and I shouldn't say you guys, I should say the board, has, has always asked us, we need to take small bites. We can only afford to take small bites. I think it should go both ways. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Okay.
Hello, gentlemen. Corey Davis, President, CBOA Local Seven One Oh Three. I'm going to, I'll cut right to the chase. I appreciate the, the information here tonight. Again, definitely helps. We had a, it was already pre-planned before any of this insurance happened, but we had a a membership meeting last night, and it completely took over the conversation, as you can much imagine, so. So I'll cut right to the chase. I would like to, I'd like to make a request to include or invite the department heads and union, and the appropriate union officials to the discussion. I think it would help, it would be invitations to both sides. You know, this is enormous change with, you know, little time, and our members are beyond worried. I can't, like, there, there's, you know, the ifs, ands, or buts, you know, I know that you're, you know, we're trying to make, you know, our budgets here, but they're worried about their budgets for their families and what their careers are going to look like within the county. You know, we had a, we had, I didn't realize it, because I'd never met him, but sitting behind me at, at last week's meeting, there was a gentleman that started like a week ago. And he quit his other job to come work here, a lot because of the benefits. He's not making more money at this job than he was at his, at his last job. But with, I mean, I was like, you've got to be kidding me to pull, you know, for him, you know, to, to seemingly have the rug pulled out from underneath of him, so. But we, we asked to be part of the conversation, not to stick our noses in this, but, but to help contribute ideas. There was a lot of ideas that came out, that, that people were throwing out in our meeting last night. And I was like, yeah, that'd be great, have, you know, and they're asking me, have, you know, has the board thought about that? Do they know about this? And I don't know. I didn't have an answer for him, so that's why we're asking to be a part of the conversation. And to, and to prevent both ways, you know, like you talked about earlier, that, you know, misinformation and like propaganda, you know, things like that, you had a lot of crazy questions coming at you, you know, just like, no, you know, so. So we want to be, we have a great funnel established, you know, with all organized labor, and, you know, let us use that both ways. This is, this would be a great opportunity for you guys to take advantage of that, so that we can get the, you know, the information back to our members. You know, but again, we all understand budgets are tight, and at the same time, taking care of our county is our, is all of our main goal, and we all play our part. I'm a big believer in you get what you pay for, and I can't afford to buy it twice, so. And, you know, that goes for, a lot of times, you know, when we're looking at new equipment for what we do, or, you know, getting the right stuff, but you know, as I've said a hundred times, and I'll say it a hundred times or more, quality labor is in cheap, and cheap labor is in quality. We need the best employees for our county. You know, regardless of what role we're, we're playing within that. Those of you who have gotten to know me, know that you've seen that organized labor doesn't have to be confrontational or, or, you know. You know, I hope that, you know, for, some of you I know better than others. I hope to get to know the rest of you guys here, the way I've gotten to know the other three, but you know, again, I just want to, with, with that, you know, we're not trying, trying necessarily steer the conversation. We want to be able to, you know, because I understand that we can't bargain, you know, this part of it, but I think that we could really contribute and be a funnel for those ideas. Sheriff Sheehan already volunteered last week, and I've also spoken with, with their, with the president of their union, Derek Brand, and I've also spoken with our county engineer, Laura. She's, you know, she'd like to be a part of it, too. You know, and it's, so we can help contribute, and, and so we can go back and answer these questions as, as they're following to us. I know you guys have an open-door policy, but not everybody likes to go to the board. Sometimes they like to go to Laura, they might want to go to me, they might want to go to, you know, Sheriff Sheehan, or whoever it is, whether it be Ask Me, or whatever other unions are. You know, we're just looking for the invite. So on behalf of all of our members and leadership, I ask that you allow us in, in many hands, make light work, and let us help you carry this load.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you, Corey. Thank you. All right. Okay. Any other board comments or anything? Okay. On that, one thing I want to bring up on this is, does the board want to meet next week? I know the eleventh, for, you know, the county's closed for Veterans Day. Do we want to meet? Have another meeting, just to talk about this? Or wait till the following week? I know that on, on Wednesday, we have our canvassing meeting, but they, that'll be real short, but do we want to call another meeting? We can think about it and decide. Let me know.
Neither way.
Okay. Neither way.
I'll be out of town for work, but
Okay.
if there's
Okay.
four for Quorum, that's more than enough.
And Wednesday won't work for me, for sure.
Wednesday won't work, yeah. All right. All right. If we did Monday, would you be here Monday?
Uh, we were, I, I got to leave Monday afternoon. I could call in Monday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, all right, I'll look at the calendar. I'll get with Michelle and look at that, see what can we do, so. Okay. All right. Yes, sir, come on up.
My name is Kyle Sanderson. I work for District Five Secondary Roads Department. And I've spent a little bit of time today jotting down a few bullet points I want to talk about, and I would also like to commend this gentleman on his statements of, "A little bit at a time is all we ever hear." But anyway, in the past, I believe it was twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and I think the only one of you that might have been here was Mr. Ong. It was the last year Rocky Dewitt, I believe, was on the council. And we were here at a meeting similar to this, but about raises. In that meeting, one of the council members, and I do not remember which, made the statement to all of us employees that were here. "We know we can't compete with the private sector," and I don't know if you remember these words, "but, but we offer the, the benefit package plan that we do to get and retain good employees." And here we are, how many years later. I, I've heard it said, and, and I spoke with you on, on Facebook the other night a little bit. I, I saw the comments of people saying, well, this shortfall's been going on for ten years, or more. Why weren't we doing small increments ten years or more ago? Instead of waiting until now, and I, I ran some numbers today, I personally guarantee you I will hit the six thousand dollar mark. I have diabetes, I also have psoriasis, and I have some other problems. That's four hundred dollars a month. That's going to cost me out of my pocket in a twelve-month period, if I have to go to a six thousand dollar out-of-pocket. I was hoping to maybe get a little better car. I, I drive a twenty-some-year-old vehicle. I can't do it if I got to put four hundred dollars a month. I'm going to have to find a second job. That's just all there is to it. Some of the other stuff, some of the other comments that I saw on Mr. Nelson's site was, "Why don't the supervisors and the employees get together and talk about ways to lessen costs?" Well, what, I, I don't want to sound bad, but these people that are saying these things don't realize, we just finished a project today that took three weeks that we are now doing ourselves, because we can't afford to hire somebody as we keep hearing, to save the county seventy thousand dollars. That's only one instance of the things that we talk about. We talk about them with Laura all the time. We're constantly trying to find ways to save, particularly the secondary roads money. Okay, because we get tired of the words, "we don't have the money." I invite all of you, just once, the, the, when I started working here in twenty twenty-one, and the first time I had to go to what is considered the main shed in District Five, and I walked into that Hornick shed, and I looked around, and I looked up, and I went, oh my God, what did I get myself into? How many of you have actually gone and, and looked at some of these buildings? I mean, if you have, great. If I'm wrong, I apologize. But if you haven't, go look at them. Come, come down when we're having a rainstorm. And figure out what part of the building you want to work on your machine, so you're not getting rained on inside the building. I mean, it's, we work for the county, for goodness sake, you know, we should have a little bit better than that. I, myself, and I'm only speaking for me, I've even offered, and I have, actually, I did for a couple of months, because my truck that I drive has been broke down all summer, because for one, we've been buying the, the cheapest of cheap for so many years, but does anybody ever really weigh the difference between buying them cheap and, and the cost of the repairs? There's a whole lot of money that could be saved there, which I think we're going down the right road now by having our own mechanic. But I, myself, have offered, and I, and I did, I spent about a month doing mechanic work, you know, big stuff that we would normally ship out, because I used to own my own business. I've done that kind of work. And so my foreman took it to Laura, and she said, go ahead and do them, if he knows how to do them, is, is my understanding of how it went, and we saved, I'll bet you, we saved probably eight to ten thousand dollars in that month, just doing these repairs ourselves. Now, did I get anything extra? A mechanic's pay? No, I didn't. But I didn't care, because I was trying to help the county. So that's just one of my things.
Okay.
People are saying on these sites, maybe we need to cut back more. You can only cut back so much, folks. That's just like going and buying groceries. Eventually, you're going to cut back to the point to where all you're taking home is the plastic bag you normally would have carried your, your, your groceries in. We can't cut back much more than we are. When I first started working here, the tools that we had were ninety percent road fines, as we call it. Somebody driving along, wrench falls off their truck, we pick it up, hey, we got a new wrench. We had a lot of that. Thanks to Laura, we are getting a little bit better on some of our tools. You know, there, there are a lot of good ideas... You know, there are a lot of good ideas floating around, but the words we keep hearing are, "We don't have the money," which I get. It's got to be done in increments. So does this. $400 a month for me means I got to find pretty much almost another full-time job that I can actually work in after I'm working here. The whole secondary roads gravel roads project is going on. I believe if, if I'm wrong, please say so, but I believe the number was around $10 million is the money that we got out of the CF money to do this. Okay? The reason we're doing this is because, and I'm sorry if I run out of time, say so.
Yeah, you are, we are over time. So if you could just go to finish, yeah.
Okay. So I guess my point is, is we went so many years that they cut back on the gravel we were allowed to put on the roads. We had to spend $10 million at one time now, which is going to take another six years to do. And we're doing the same thing by not looking at some of the things that maybe the taxpayers don't understand that maybe it does need to go up a little bit to keep up with the rising cost of doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. There you go. All right. Okay. With that, we will move on if there's nothing else. See nobody else? Okay. As always, one more then.
Doyle Turner, 2738 200 Street, Mowville. So my understanding is the policy we have now, we are grandfathered in on. So if we give up this policy, there's no going back to this policy, correct?
Is that correct, Seth?
Is there a possibility? I mean, the gentleman that was just here, I fully understand where he's at. Two years I've gone through my maximum out of pocket on January 1st. I know I'm going to go through my maximum out of pocket every year. Fully get that. Is there a way that we can hold on to that policy, add these policies, and still keep our foot in the door on this old policy and maybe the employees make up some of the difference? So can they buy a better policy is what I'm basi, can they buy this remaining policy? Is that an option?
Steph, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, I can. You could definitely do that. The majority of the folks sit on that PPO, which is a $250 deductible, 750 out of pocket. And I just want to point out, when the answer is yes, you would have to offer five plans in order to do that. So the answer is yes. It just depends on what you guys decide to do. The one thing that I will also say is with a grandfather, I'll just kind of give you a quick scenario and I don't have the exact numbers. But if you switch, and this is why they've gone away, if you go up 5%, I believe is what the number is. It's been quite a few years since we've done anything with grandfather plans. If you go up 5%, so for instance, your $250 deductible could only go up $12.50, so it'd be a $262.50 deductible versus a $250 deductible. So the answer is absolutely you could. There's just not a lot of wiggle room to be able to pull levers to, to save some dollars there. The other thing too is with, with the non-grandfathered versus grandfathered status, a lot of the things that you guys actually had in your, in your plan were in the new policy. The other thing too is if you look at, just theoretically, if you look at where you're at today at the 750, I looked at the numbers over the weekend, there were a lot of folks spending more than $750 because they were paying more for co-pays. So the one thing I wanted to mention too, not that this is, I'm not trying to give you with a silver coat or the silver lining, but if you cut that in half and went a 500 and 1,500, every single dollar that you have for your co-pays, including office visits, urgent care, emergency rooms, all those, all those dollars are going into that $1,500 bucket. So I saw in some cases, people were actually spending $3,000, $4,000 because of co-pays. That will actually help that, that, those folks that have hit that out-of-pocket max long-term. So there are some benefits to being non-grandfathered and, and that's probably the main one. Because as soon as you hit that number, like you do, because it's probably a non-grandfathered plan, you're done for the rest of the year. So if I hit 700, or I'm sorry, it's $1,500 on January 2nd, I'm not paying another co-pay. So that's something to just consider because, you know, part of the Obamacare was make it affordable. Well, it's not affordable, but they did make it to where you're not continuing to pay co-pays throughout the year. So there is some advantages, there is some disadvantages, but the answer is yes.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Seth. All right.
You know, maybe if we, you know, if we take somebody like this gentleman and you go through the math, it may actually make sense to at least, if you, if you keep your foot in that door on the, on the, on the grandfathered plan with part of your people, does that keep it open for everybody? I think it's worth at least doing something to hold on to that grandfathered plan because who knows where this thing's going? And I would leave it open just for the possibility at some point that might be your best option.
Okay. Thanks, Joel. Okay. That's good information. We'll get all that processed and get options. Okay. Anything else on the board?
So, and I know you got to leave, Dan, so if my question to Ryan here gets long, that's, that's fine. So when we went through the budget this last year, we were going to be pretty close to, because we got to have a 15%, 16% reserves in order to fund the first couple of months of the new fiscal year. Have you, let's say worst-case scenario, let's say we do nothing. And let's say on the worst-case scenario, we're short another 1.6 million. Do we have that money in reserves to even pay for that? And still have enough to fund the county for the first two months of the next fiscal year? And if you don't know off the top of your head, I-
Well, off the top of my head, the worst-case scenario is we do nothing and we have to make a transfer out of the general supplemental fund. If the worst-case scenario, that will zero that fund out, so the answer is no, we would not have any reserves. And again, that's worst case. As I said, I estimated anywhere between, you know, my estimate was 250,000 was best case. But that is, I believe, highly unlikely because again, as I said, when I use the monthly averages, I put a stop-loss recovery in January and February, which we, because normally you don't get the recoveries because nobody's hit the $100,000 mark. And you get those at a, you know, the claim hits in January, you get reimbursed a couple of months later. So honestly, best-case scenario is 500,000 and we will still have some money left in general supplemental. And then there, I think mainly concerned is the general basic reserve level. And by doing nothing, it doesn't really impact. But I really feel that we need to adjust the budget because, you know, as I said, each office/department isn't reflecting a true cost of each employee in that they have. So if we did that, then some of that money would come out of general basic rather than general supplement. And then, yes, we could be threatening that level again.
I'm just, where my concern is, is that, you know, we had, so we've moved, you know, the 450 out of reserves that we weren't planning on as far as the budget process. And then we moved 60-ish thousand for the elevator, which again was something we weren't planning on. And we're only five months, four months into this fiscal year. If, if we keep having these, you know, these things come out of left field that cost money, but then if we still have this hanging over us, I mean, we cannot be in a position where July 1, we can't fund the government.
Yes, we've had some bad news, but we've also had some good news too. We've had, you know, more inmates than we budgeted. So we'll be getting more revenue there. But, and from when I was, did the AFR, we did collect more taxes than we had budgeted. So there are things that can help offset these negatives. But I'm just saying right now how it's budgeted in worst-case scenario.
Okay. I have to leave. Will you take over?
Yep.
Let me just say, thank you everyone for coming today to, I know I'm heading off, but thank you for being here and engaging the board, so.
Dan Heiselman, Conservation. And I guess what, the question I have for the board, and I know when we started going through all our budget problems this last budget review, and we were cutting employees and we were giving money back. We were told after the budget period, we were going to start having department head meetings and start working on this right away. We've had one meeting. We didn't talk about budget. The meeting that we're going to have on the 6th of November has now been moved to the 16th, I believe.
13th.
13th, excuse me.
Yep.
Which I was excited about the 6th because I could actually attend. And I was hoping we would just talk about insurances, premiums, what is going to, the impact it's going to have on my employees. Because I'm getting those questions. And I'm sure as all the other department heads are. Elected officials is, what's it going to cost me? Unfortunately, on the 13th, I have a conservation board meeting. And now my board liaison won't be there either because he'll be here at the department head meeting. I can't be in two places at one time. So when are we as department heads and elected officials going to get together with the supervisors other than the 13th? Because that leaves you two and a half weeks roughly after that. I was thinking of the 16th, so it's a little longer, but December 10th. And for us, those questions and answers for our employees, I guess I'm asking, when are we going to start talking to each other as department heads to supervisors? Because we are your staff. I mean, I have concerns of my, you talk about employees and retention. And we also talk about schools and keeping our, keeping families here, bringing families to this county. I think of all my employees, 17, there's four of us that don't have kids. My kids are all gone. They've gone through the schools. But they're from young, you know, daycare all the way up through high school. I don't want to see them taking another job. We lose them, an experienced employee, along with, you know, our schools are going to suffer as well. All my employees have to have an education for a year. They have to be certified in law enforcement, certified in pesticides, certified in vehicle, driving a vehicle. We just went through that EVOC training. I mean, there's so many certifications we have to have. So that takes a commitment on their part. So I'd like the small bites that we've talked about. And I think those small bites should have been looked at through the taxes and assessments. I talked to Dennis Butler, first year I was here, we talked about that. I know we played the shell game. I don't want to call it that, but we, we were using different funds. Well, those funds are no longer there. And as a taxpayer, I want the best sheriff's department, I want the best ambulance, the best fire department to respond when I have a problem. I pay taxes. I have a seven-acre acreage. I know what my taxes are and I'll gladly pay more. You did a survey, I hear. I was gone on Facebook. I wish I'd have gotten that survey. Little bits. And I know it's been 10 years and you're proud of that. I'm proud of that to work for you guys. But it's starting to affect the departments, budgets, equipment, staffing. I gave up, what, 12 seasonal staff. It hurt. It was hard. So I would like us to get together as department heads and elect, and supervisors and work on this together. So I can tell my employees what are going on, what's going on. Just got the open enrollment on Sunday. I looked at open enrollment. I'm not going to do anything on that until I know what's going on here. I've got expenses that aren't going to be, $7,000, I just found out with my one daughter. Insurance won't cover it through dental. So we need the plan. So it's just, I guess that's all I'm going to say is I'd like us to work together more. Because I don't want to come in three months and we're going to be going through the same budget cuts, same thing again. And as a taxpayer, if you have to raise my taxes, I'll support it. Because I know where those services are going. So, thank you.
The one thing that I'd like to, I think, a little bit is what has been said also tonight is, is that the information hasn't gone out to the employees. It's only gone out to the public. And I just feel as a department head, that's hard. That's hard for me as an employee and then my employees to understand what's going on. The only information that's presented is at board meetings. And so for secondary roads employees to come, they have to take an hour of vacation to come here. And if this is the only place they're hearing this, and I don't want to repeat it because I don't want to repeat something wrong. If we could start either getting weekly email updates about where we're at on this or even just what started it, you know, versus it having to be at the board meetings would be helpful maybe. And then just a little note, we had our safety meeting last Thursday. We had Gallagher liability come and talk to us about some of, some safety things. And with that, the person who came said that my employees don't have to do any work they don't feel comfortable doing. That if it's not safe, they don't have to do it. That actually is not an option for them. There are visibility conditions out on, you know, plowing roads that no one would be comfortable being out there, but they're out there. And so it's things like that that I think we also should take into consideration in their benefits plan that we put them in very stressful situations, which is a direct relation to their medical. So if we could think about those things that, you know, maybe private sector people don't have to worry about. Maybe they get to always be in safe conditions. I know it's not just my department. Obviously, many county departments don't get to be safe all the time, so. Thank you.
Just a comment on department head meetings. Obviously, I don't control that schedule. But just a question for Mark, maybe, maybe consider, I know if it was moved from the 6th to the 13th, maybe there's a way to do something this week if Dan's available, like 7th or just as soon as possible, just to-
Yeah, I know that, so Dan has had two department head meetings. I missed the second one. I don't know, did either one of you go to that with, with Dan the second time? So I don't know what was covered at that meeting other than what was in the, what was in the minutes. Did you go to that, Kent?
Just have Cam fall and just had so many things going on.
Sure. I know we got more meetings the rest of the week with, with our schedule tomorrow and Thursday. But yeah, we can relay that to Dan and he can call something if he needs to, so.
Can I say one thing real quick?
Sure.
I know I already spoke. What Laura was just speaking of, about things that we employees go through that people out there don't know about. About, I'm going to say, three to four weeks ago, maybe, we were doing a project on 141. I was a flagger. I had a gentleman get so irate with me. He tried to run me over. He threatened me by telling me I better be scared. And there was about four times this gentleman tried to run me over and he actually lived right there. So he came back with three different vehicles down his driveway. Yes, I filed a complaint. I haven't heard anything of whatever became of it. But those are just some of the things that we go through out there every time we flag even, that the general public doesn't even know about. So I just wanted to say that after Laura brought that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Green, Director of San Justin Health. I concur with what's been said related to communication. Last week after the meeting, of course, it created a lot of media, that sort of stuff. Trying to figure out what were the facts I could share with staff to kind of give them sort of awareness of what's going on. Tonight, I have a group that came just to listen to the discussion. But I think as we start looking at doing this, I think the cooperative nature, sitting down with department heads, in fact, some other things is even looking at is beyond the health insurance is really kind of talking about what are some expectations through the budgeting process? What are we looking at, getting a clear financial picture of where we're starting? And then what would you be planning in? And the challenge that I have is that I have to take my department budget to my Board of Health by the 13th of December, the December meeting for approval. So it gets into the process. And the little difference with that is my budget already has all the personnel benefits cost added to it. It's not an overlay that occurs after you finish the operational side. So trying to strategize for that to know whether, is it another 50, 90,000 I need to budget into that, whatever it may be? Yeah, sooner is better than later, that too. So, but thank you for the- So, but thank you for the conversation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Tina Bertrand, Woodbury County Treasurer. Uh, I know I sent an email, email to the board early this week and just kind of asked them some questions, so I do appreciate the clarifications. Um, probably just brings up more questions for us all. Uh, one thing I do want to say is I hear a lot about having department head meetings and stuff like that with the board and I don't want anybody to forget that there are other elected officials that would like to be invited to that meeting as well because we are the department heads to some of those departments. Um, I know it's sometimes a little difficult, uh, to keep that in mind, but we all have the same kind of questions. I think we all have the same kind of concerns, um, knowing that this is an uphill battle. Do appreciate everything you guys are doing and trying to, um, understand what our options are, uh, knowing just with my own experience, how the healthcare industry works as an employer. Um, it's not unusual to get this information this late in the year, right before open enrollment. It's been that way for as long as I've been in the working world, which has been probably thirty-five years. So it's nothing new. It's just I think the costs, we can all agree, are pretty much unsustainable at this point in time. And we don't, none of us know where we're going. Um, I, like everybody else, would love to keep the plan that we have. Trying to understand the comments in terms of what's grandfathered, what's not, what are the benefits, what's not. Very difficult, this is a very difficult forum to have that kind of detailed information. We're just limited. Um, we're limited on the number of, you know, how much time we can talk. Kind of a one-way conversation, like I think I mentioned in my email. Um, you guys do a great job at listening, but you can't always have that back and forth dialogue. And one concern that I can, I, I'm going to voice because I do see it, there's a lot of people, right? There's a lot of departments, there's a lot of ideas. It'd be nice to be able to kind of hear, um, and share in some other format, maybe where we can put something on a OneDrive or something and have a place to post it or a survey or something like that, just to get that feedback from everybody and maybe be able to disseminate it another way. I know, um, I think the union member or union president already left, said he got a lot of great ideas. You know, I think we all have great ideas. I don't know the best way to be able to communicate that, um, where all departments and everybody, everybody can have that information. Because we do have three or four different unions as well and they don't always meet and talk as a group either. So, anyway, again, thank you for your time and effort on this. Anything else I can help you with, I'd be happy to help. Thanks.
Thank you, Tina. Seeing, I guess we'll, uh, see no other public comment, I'll open it up for Matthew Kent, Dave, if you have any other comments, otherwise we'll move on.
Follow-up question for you, Seth. Looking at this benchmarking table you have in regards to employer contributions to dependent premiums, we're at eight percent. The other columns you, you show thirty, twenty-two, twenty-seven, uh, twenty-eight.
Correct.
What sort of numbers, maybe this is a Ryan question, what sort of numbers are we talking about as far as that being a difference? Because we're, we're in line, you said, for overall, which is, is where we're at for the employee. But what is that general dollar figure? Going from eight percent to, I guess, the lowest on here, twenty-two.
I, uh, I cannot answer that because I would probably need to know how many employees are on that and I don't have that information.
And...
I, as soon as we have all the numbers back, um, we can get back to you guys right away on that.
We don't have those numbers?
It, 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 it comes down to if you continue to keep that ninety-ten split. I mean, if that's, if that's what the board decides to do, then, um, you're, you're going to be ten percent on a number, on a plan...
Yeah.
...that you decide.
Right.
Um, and I don't have the new numbers yet for that middle of the road plan. I could, yeah, we'll have those hopefully by the end of the week. I'm, I'm, you're, you're asking a different question though. You're asking, what, what are you, what are you looking for in that question?
I'm saying if, if we preserve the plan, if we preserve the employee contribution, but we adjusted the dependent premium costs required by the employee, what sort of difference is that?
I can, I don't have those numbers.
Because we're only speaking, I mean, we're speaking like we either raised the deductible or we raised the premiums, but we're also talking about going from a two to a four-way.
Yep.
And I'm, I'm curious what the difference is and going from the two to the four-way, that savings in addition to what we are, I mean, how much more beneficial is this portion?
For the four-tier versus two-tier?
Well, for the two-tier now, but for the four-tier later.
I can get those numbers to you.
Okay. Obviously you don't know exactly what they would enroll.
That's one piece.
So that's why you're kind of tied to the two-tier for this question, I guess.
That's, that's correct. And we don't have the four-tier rates back because we just requested those.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Also say one more thing, uh, I, I will agree that, um, with our self-funded clients, this process will start sixty days prior, um, and the information will come out a lot sooner. I can commit to that for next year anyway. Um, this year's been a little bit difficult with well-marked, so I do appreciate those comments and I completely agree with those.
No, and thank you for all the work that you've had to do. I know it's been a, a race to the finish line and there's, we're not there yet, but thank you for getting that. And Matthew, we can put you in touch with Seth if you have some more questions. Matthew's got probably more health background than any of us up here, so, um, great question. Thank you, Seth.
Thanks.
Ken, Dave, anything you want to add?
Oh, I was just going to say that, um, some of the things I've looked at is that, you know, family plans have increased fifty-two percent in the last ten years. Maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but, uh, and then the private insurance has gone up eighty point zero-four percent in the last ten years. There is a plan out there, uh, it's called Metashare, but, uh, I don't know if people have looked at that, but, uh, you know, we don't want to lose that grandfather plan for Woodbury County either. I know the, you know, there's such high costs in our county for a bridge, a million dollars, road graders, what, about five hundred thousand? And we don't want to pass on that increased cost for this insurance to our citizens and we surely don't want to increase our levy. Talked about, you know, what do you do? You let employees go, we don't want to do that either. Um, so, we're looking at possibly making some more money off of the LEC, but, you know, we might not have a full answer right now, but hopefully in a week or two, we'll have a better outlook, so.
Dave, anything?
That's what, one, one more thing, if you guys decided also, if you wanted to look at, I mean, Blue Cross Blue Shield is, is the, is the gold standard around here. Metashare is, is not a, uh, it's, it's a different type of insurance, it's not really insurance. Um, but if there is something, this is another thing that I would discuss, um, probably, you know, at some point is, do you do a full RFP next year and look at, um, the other carriers, um, from a cost perspective? So that's something that they're out there too. Um, I know that would be tough to get away, but I, you know, we need to probably make sure that, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield's doing their job as far as, um, their cost control and what they're doing from a stop-loss perspective. So, that's something else to consider in the future.
I'll, I'll just say from experience, if you do that, start that like January one. Because if it's tough getting a response from the plan you have and it's the gold standard, trust me, you go shop around, as I've done before, and you tell your client, you know, we'll have, we'll have some options for you. You'll get one option, two months later you'll get the next option, two months later you'll get the next option. Uh, so it's, that's a long-term, uh, goal. Starting January one.
And we certainly could. I mean, you don't know until you try and doesn't mean that we would change providers, right? But we could sure see what, what the market is, so. May not be a bad idea.
Yeah. It is a good exercise to see where you are at compared to other plans because you'll also get, uh, you know, employees that have other carriers and, and have different perspectives there, but they might be on a, you know, a different type of scenario with that carrier that you're not aware of. So until you get your census to them, then they price it their way and then you see, is it more beneficial to go by, um, you know, their way or, or your way or to look at ages or things like that?
Um, in closing, I guess my remarks would be, and I, I've mentioned this to employees that took time to call me and there's been quite a few the last week, ten days, and I'm very appreciative of that. I tell taxpayers all the time that on my time, on my dime, I would be happy to take them anywhere in the county to see any of our buildings, any of our vehicles, any of our equipment and show them that we are not, where none of our staff is working in a Taj Mahal. The, uh, the jail is probably the nicest building that we have and that's really only because it's new. Um, I, I share with people that, uh, that stories that, you know, staff were excited that they found a cheap refrigerator for the break room on Facebook Marketplace or some used desks off of Craigslist. And when I look at what my tax bill is for the quarter mile that my farm sits on, and, and for those in the room that don't know my background, I, I farm full-time. That's, that's my breadwinner, I feed cattle, so I, I understand what, what costs are better than anybody. I'm not sure that I could maintain my section of road where I live with the taxes that I pay if I kept that money myself. So, the public is getting a bargain on what they pay. Unfortunately, they don't see that. And the five of us up here can talk about the work that our staff does, the creativity that our department heads have, and it seems to fall in deaf ears. And I would point to, look at the Sioux City election that's happening tonight. When I first got on the board two years ago, there was a Sioux City Council election where there were several candidates who ran on lowering property taxes that never made it out of the primary. To two years later, every candidate is running on lowering property taxes on the ballot tonight. So, when we talk about, it is nothing personal from me to you or, I, I could speak for my colleagues, but I would guess the same, that we don't, that we want you to go without, that we want you to go above and beyond, but please realize that there are a hundred and five thousand of our employers that believe, that many believe are paying way too much and we have to try to balance that. And that's very hard because again, I think that we are getting an absolute bargain. And when you look at your tax receipt, at least for me, I think my county portion of the taxes went up two and a half percent last year. I'm not sure you could find anything that you could buy in the United States that went up two and a half percent year over year. And so we have done an incredible job getting the job accomplished with little to nothing, but I also realize that there is a point where we, we can't do what we can't do. And so how we can connect with the public on that, you know, the secondary roads, we cut some services that taxpayers had been getting for a lot of years. And I thought, and I told some of you in this room, that I thought that that would be a gateway, that I would get angry phone calls from them saying, you know, what the heck, I, I used to have the service, why is it gone? And a lot of it has been, oh, okay, glad my taxes are going down. And that's the reality of it. So, um, we have to, unfortunately, when we're public service, which everyone in this room, we all serve the, the public of Woodbury County, we have our story to tell and I don't believe that we are squandering a penny here at the county in any department. But that is what we're up against with society today and with the taxpayers of Woodbury County. And I just want to be clear on the comments that I hear from, from taxpayers and business owners. And so it's not a reflection at all on you, what, what this board ends up doing, um, but that's an uphill battle that we have and I'm proud of the work that you guys do and living out in the rural areas, I get to see the secondary roads and the EMTs, the sheriff's office at work every day. And I'm, and I'm glad that they do the work that they do. So, I, I appreciate you guys being here and, um, we're going to continue to chew over this and if we call a special meeting next week, you know, we'll make sure we get the word out so people can participate. And Seth, thank you for doing the work that you're doing and Ryan, the work that you've been doing, we appreciate that very much. And, uh, we will try to land on the best case possible, so, thank you. With that, I'll move on to reports on committee meetings. The only thing I will say is that the LEC authority has a meeting on Thursday afternoon, it's at two o'clock. Dave, you'll have to be here instead of me, but then there is a joint closed session with the county's attorney and the LEC's attorney regarding mediation after that. Probably, I, I see the LEC authority has quite a bit on the agenda, so it might be more like two forty-five, but we will have a, a closed session on that. Uh, that's all I have for reports on committee meetings. Item eleven, citizen concerns, if anybody wants to say something or talk about something that wasn't, uh, addressed on the agenda, happy to hear it. Actually, um, I would, I'm, I'm probably going to talk about during board concerns, so I'll just, I'll wait, maybe wait, call you up Doyle soon, unless you want to talk about the amicus brief you called me today on the pipeline. I'll let Doyle introduce because I know he's been working with this, but it's going to be on the agenda.
So, ISAC has, um, agreed to, um, pay for part of the amicus brief for the Shelby County lawsuit that's going to, that's headed for the Supreme Court, the federal Supreme Court. And counties are going around and voting, I believe it's five hundred dollars, that ISAC is asking each county to pay. And, um, I, I, I know that it came in a little late for you guys to get it on this meeting and, uh, um, I, I just, I think it's, this, this isn't really about a pipeline anymore. This is about local control. And this case not only took away local control, it took away state control. So really, our attorney general should be in on this. Also, there are some states that have joined in with amicus briefs. Oddly enough, they're all liberal states, they're blue states. Uh, Minnesota, Michigan, um, can't, we didn't have any Republican states really, the attorney generals didn't sign on. Strange, but that's, that's the way it is. But this is, this is whether our zoning, which we've had for over half a century, you know, long time, um, the ability to make rules within our own county, this all, this is a precedent that if this stands, it will really put local control in jeopardy. So, I appreciate you guys looking at that.
Are there any other citizen concerns? If not, I'll roll into more concerns in and I'll piggyback off of that. So, uh, yeah, we, uh, Dan Benjer got a letter from ISAC this past week about the brief and it's going to be on the agenda for the eighteenth. I think the deadline's like December first or something to join, so we're, we're still within that deadline. Um, I saw an updated map today, it's like eight counties, nine counties, something like that that have signed on, but I think it would be a good show of, to have us on there and we've been, uh, just involved in this process as anybody and, and, uh, what Mr. Turner said is correct, it's really a battle about, you know, not only county control but state control and it's really scary because, um, there are a lot of entities, especially private equity, that are looking at this project here in Iowa and they're seeing what, you know, this, what can happen with this pipeline and, um, don't kid yourself, it will not stop there. And there will be all kinds of crazy initiatives that they will try to chase down and, and take people's property away under that, you know, that economic incentive to do so. So, I think, you know, I, I know that I have citizens that reach out and are appreciative that we are fighting for their property rights and I think this board has made a commitment to continue to do that, so, we'll have that on for the eighteenth. Any other, uh, board concerns?
Um, I'm glad these costs are being discussed in general, you know, for the public to understand. When we hear from our administrator for health benefits, ten percent increase for the last ten years, I mean, and, you know, we increased askings by two and a half percent. I mean, these are, these are real numbers and part of the things that we are going to have to talk about when, uh, we get to budgeting is, is this continued move to manipulate property tax control. Obviously, two to three percent is considered the range of you shall not exceed. Well, how much of an employee's compensation in a county that uses that for recruiting and retention? and retention as a portion? It's, it's large. So that increase is something the county has been, fortunately, been able to give to our employees in lieu of a lot of different things. And it's a great plan, we're proud of it, and it's just, again, I'm glad we're having this public discussion, because as legislators come and say, you need to stick to two or three percent, at some point, you know, tell it to the health insurers and the national government. I mean, we are doing nothing but everything we can to have employee wellness plans, we had sit-stand stations previously, we do all these things that we can, and these costs are not under our control.
And what's, and I'll piggyback off of that, Matthew, because what's scary is that the folks, and, and this is why the folks in the private sector feel that they're being squeezed so much by the taxes. In some places, the taxes are out of line. I don't think they are here, but folks in the private sector, for a lot of them, upper management's doing well, but for a lot of folks, they're not making any more money. And, and I know some of our employees are frustrated that they maybe have a two or three percent raise the last couple of years. There are a lot of people in this county that are working private industry that haven't seen a raise like that in several years. And so ultimately, we got to figure out how can we get wealth back to the middle class? Because the reason that the state is wanting to push this, oh, you can only go up two, three percent, is because the middle class is complaining about their taxes. Well, the middle class isn't making any money either. So it's, we've got, it's, it's a huge issue, not just for our employees, but the private sector employees too, because we mirror them, you know, and if our, if our private sector businesses can do well, we could pay folks here more, and we can afford more tax. So it's, I, I, I don't know, it's, I see Kim Reynolds was last week was talking about, you know, more proposed changes on, that scares me. Dave, Kent, anything?
Yeah, do you want to go on, on the same topic, or?
No, no.
I just have a quick change. So I mean, thanks to Laura and also Drew Byer for reaching out to me about the intersection there at Mowville, getting me in contact with some state DOT people, a couple of people I've talked to. Might be something worth board concern in the future here. I've looked for some information, possibly along that whole Highway twenty there of Lawton, Mowville, and Correctionville of what the statistics are and, and what they're looking at, because those are all bad intersections, so.
All right, this is the last time I get to mention this. This is for the National Sleepout, November seventh. And if anybody's interested, you could go to Cone Park at four thirty to five P.M. They're going to have chili feed, they're going to have prizes and drawings for people that are brave enough to go. And I ordered my refrigerator box from Coleman Appliances today, and I ordered a, a air mattress from Amazon, so I won't be sleeping directly on the cold ground. So if anybody's interested, the National Sleepout, November seventh.
All right, so no other concerns, we adjourned.